All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the September 23rd Work Session. The Board of Education of Charles County. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome again. As always, I'm going to take the 30 seconds to read our mission. The mission of Charles County Public Schools is to provide an opportunity for all school-aged children to receive an academically challenging, quality education that builds character, equips for leadership, and prepares for life in an environment that is safe and conducive to learning. All right. Let us begin with the... Hold on, one second. I'm on the wrong agenda. There we go. All right. The intercategory budget change request. Acton, Ms. Fisher-Davis. Welcome, ladies.
All right. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
What we'd like to discuss today is a request of an intercategory budget transfer of 1.5 million, which is in accordance with Education Article 5-105. And the request is necessary to support the following: An increase of 237,440 for administration, which is to create a new Director of IT Support; A decrease of 36,049 on mid-level administration, which are funds for additional materials of instruction for the Early Learning Center is needed for that; An increase of 249,700 under instruction salaries and wages, which reflects the reallocation of workforce Development Board funds for stipends and the reallocation of funds for letters and extended learning opportunity stipends; An increase of 264,441 under instruction supplies and materials, which will reflect the reallocation of workforce Development Board funds for supplies and materials, offset by the reallocation of funds for letters; The creation of the Director of IT Support; A printer for Henson Middle School; And funding for the Early Learning Center in La Plata; A decrease of 1.4 million, 1,362,803, for under instruction, other instructional costs, which reflect the reallocation of workforce Development Board contracted services to professional development; The reallocation of a portion of the reading budget for letters, stipends, offset by the reallocation of funds to both the Early Learning Centers for professional development and the purchase of a printer for Henson Middle School; The proposed increase of 10,000 under student transportation will reflect the reallocation of workforce Development Board funds for field trips to colleges, trade programs, and career; And the decrease of 82,440 for operation of plant, which will reflect the reallocation of a computer analyst position to partially fund the new Director of IT Support position. And last but not least is the increase of 719,711 for fixed charges, which will reflect the proper budget placement of workforce Development Board funds and fixed charges associated with the Director of IT Support position. Again, that's a total of about $1.5 million for the FY 2025 budget. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
A lot of reallocation for workforce development.
Ms. Kramer.
So I just have a question. Thank you for being here. Just a quick question about number five. So where we're taking... Looks like the bulk of the money is coming from. So is that because... I guess, because it's kind of early in the year to be saying we don't need the funds. But is that the rationale that we...
Workforce development?
Yes.
So the way the budget goes then, because when we are doing the budget in the spring, at that time, we don't know exactly what we want to do with workforce development. So by the time we get into the new year, they have a better plan of where they want to spend. So typically, we drop the money in, of course, salaries for the positions, and it usually just sits in contracted services. So once they start buying supplies and subscriptions, then we have to, like, reallocate that out to properly align with how they're spending. So at this point, they've purchased some subscriptions. They're getting ready to do some field trips. So we're just pulling that money out of contracted services and putting it in different buckets.
Got it. Okay. And the reallocation portion of the reading budget for letter stipends. Can you just give a little more detail about that?
So the... We are moving some money out of professional development in mid-level to supply us with the stipends for letters. So what we're actually doing here... Let me just find... Oh, you want to... Sure, Kevin.
We'll call a friend.
I like that. Thank you, Mr. Lowndes.
Sure. So we were able to use a grant. The rest of our LEEDs grant to fund the after-school... For the actual training itself. But the grant would not allow us to fund for the substitutes for the teachers when we pulled them from the school day to get the trainings.
Got it.
Therefore, we needed additional money for the substitutes because now we had this other money that we were able to spend on the... It was additional money that we didn't know we had at the end of the year. Last year, it ended up... They didn't spend it all from the state. So they sent something out to all the LEAs saying, "Does anyone have any additional requests?" So we put in for additional letters training. We were able... We were approved for it, but it didn't come with the stipends for the substitutes.
Got it. So we need money to pay the substitutes. Got it. Thank you for that explanation.
Any other questions or comments? All right. This action... Item is on the agenda for action later this evening. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. All right. Next up is an overview of school improvement plans, also known as the SIP, which is led by Dr. Marvin Jones, our Chief of Schools. And joining him will be Ms. Erica Williams, our Executive Director; Ms. Christina Caballero, our Principal at Matthew Henson Middle School; And Ms. Alexandria Baum, Learning Resource Teacher, also at Matthew Henson Middle School. Welcome. So how did I do? I tried to roll my arm. No, thanks. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Board Chair Maudlin, Board Vice Chair Kramer, Board members, Dr. Navarro, and staff. I'm Marvin Jones. And as mentioned, I'm Chief of Schools. And I'm here today with some experts here that I'll introduce in a second. But we are, this afternoon, going to spotlight school improvement. And so I had to bring someone from a school because who better to talk about school improvement than those that do that work, right?
All right.
And so joining me this afternoon to really sort of kick it off will be the Executive Director, who oversees Matthew Henson Middle School. And that is Ms. Erica Williams. And she will then, when she's finished, toss it to the Principal, as you mentioned, at Matthew Henson, Ms. Caballero and Ms. Baum. All right? So, Ms. Williams, take a minute.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. Definitely honored to sit beside the awesome members of Matthew Henson's professional learning team. As Dr. Jones just mentioned, today, we will dive into the strategic thinking that's embedded in school improvement planning. Since there are several layers to school improvement planning, we have divvied it up into four sections up on the screen now. So Section 1 is grounding the work in professional standards of educational leadership since we know that our principals are steering this ship towards school improvement. We'll talk about why we do continuous school improvement in the first place and the components of the Charles County Public Schools School Improvement Plan. Then, our team from Matthew Henson will take over and talk about their data, as well as their problem of practice, that root cause leading to why they may have not met any of their particular goals and the goals that they are setting for this upcoming school year, as well as their change practice. Section 3 is all about their cycle of professional learning, building capacity for their staff in order to do the work of school improvement planning, and their action steps and measuring tools to see if it's working, to see if all of these efforts are actually going to pan out. Finally, I'll rejoin the team for Section 4 to talk about the role of Executive Directors and how we support and monitor school improvement efforts. All right. So here we are in Section Number 1. So although every school has a professional learning team that meets regularly to monitor implementation of their school improvement plan, as I mentioned, this work is steered by the school principal. There are 10 professional standards for educational leadership developed to outline the leadership skills, practices, behaviors, and dispositions necessary to promote learning, achievement, and development. The one standard that is... That research shows is directly aligned with all the others is school improvement. The Professional Standards for Educational Leaders reads for standard number 10. Effective educational leaders act as agents of continuous improvement to promote each student's academic success and well-being. Those leadership behaviors include using methods of continuous improvement to achieve the vision, fulfill the mission, and promote the core values of the school; Engage others in ongoing processes of evidence-based inquiry; Learning strategic goal-setting, planning, implementation, and evaluation for continuous school and classroom improvement; As well as developing and promoting leadership among teachers and staff for inquiry, experimentation, and innovation, and initiating and implementing improvements. When a lot of people think of school improvement, they think about the opportunity for schools to simply jot down ideas and how they want to make a change. But it's actually a lot more than that. School improvement is about very strategic decision-making for sustainable change. It's one thing to have a great list of ideas and action steps, but can you sustain it and how will you monitor it? Continuous improvement is based upon three core principles about how sustainable change is achieved. Number 1: Change takes time and involves collective effort. Next is change is context-specific and therefore requires constant adaptation, data collection, and learning. And finally, focusing on a series of small changes combined with ongoing evidence collection and review can lead to large-scale change. So that is our why, why we do school improvement planning in the first place. So today, you will hear from our team from Matthew Henson about the improvement process. Some may call it more of a journey to academic success. The Office of School Administration and Leadership partnered with the Office of Teaching and Learning to guide professional learning teams through each phase of our Charles County Public Schools School Improvement Plan template. That template was divvied up into several steps. We began these steps in June, at the end of the school year in June, at our professional learning team meeting, where professional learning teams reviewed their school's vision and mission. And they began the work of school improvement by developing their collective efficacy statement. So the idea of collective efficacy is all about this mutual trust amongst all of your stakeholders in order to really drive home this shared belief that all students can achieve. So they developed a statement first to really power their work collectively. So it's not just our principal. It's not just the instructional leadership team. It's just not a handful of your star teachers. The work involves every single stakeholder. And that's what they developed within their collective efficacy statement. They then did a drill down of their data. So they reviewed their iReady data, as well as eventually their MCAP data. And based on that data dive, they developed a problem of practice, trying to drill down to the root cause, looking at their data. And then they set a goal. And those goals have to be very specific, obviously measurable. There is a timeline involved, and they are monitoring their progress towards those SMART goals. From there, they begin to think about their change practice. Some people may assume it's like, okay, what are we going to get these kids to do now? It's not that. The change practice is actually what the adults will change in their practice in order to move the mission of the school and therefore meet their SMART goal. And then now, now that we are in Cycle Number 1, we are in the cycle of professional learning, where teams, just like Matthew Henson, go from planning out their action steps to implementing those actions. And then soon, they will study using their data to see if what they put in place was actually effective. And then they will act upon that to determine if they want to have a different change practice for the next cycle, which begins in the second quarter, or stay the course in Cycle Number 1, which is all of the first quarter. Today, you will hear from our Matthew Henson team as they walk you through each of the steps of the school improvement plan process.
Good afternoon. I am Alex Baum. I am the Learning Resource Teacher at Matthew Henson. And I'm going to start with some of our school-wide data from iReady and our MCAP. Forty-six percent of our students are two or more grade levels below reading and mathematics with the iReady data. And so those are the green, yellow, and red bars. And then we also have some data from our MCAP. And we have less than 0% and 2% that are distinguished learners, proficient learners, in the blues for MCAP. We have a very high population of developing learners and then our learners from below that, the beginning learners. So we're working on bringing the next level up. So that is where we're looking at our data for those students that are the two or more grade levels below. Oh, the 62... Oh, sorry. There's two parts to ours. There's 62% of referrals were for disruption and disrespect last school year. So we're looking at not just their performance, but also some behavioral concerns. 65% of the students are not meeting the proficiency level at the middle school ELA MCAP assessments due to lack of understanding of content standards, instructional strategies, and progress monitoring of standards. Forty-six of students in grades 6 through 8 are performing two or more grade levels below reading and mathematics due to an overreliance on Tier 1 questioning, which is a lower level of questioning basic facts type, and then the inconsistent application of standards. The percentage of disruptions has a direct and negative impact on that learning environment, then creating kind of a trickle-down effect of if they're not working on what they should be doing, they're obviously not learning and mastering those standards.
So what we have done at Henson for our change practice is our SMART goal is the percentage of students performing proficient or above on the ELA MCAP will increase by 10%. Change practice, it's listed as weekly overviews. I don't like to have teachers think that they have to do one more thing. But they do have the lesson plan, as you heard Ms. Baum mention, the classroom disruptions. If you don't have instruction going on, that's when you're going to have more classroom disruptions. We need everybody to plan. So last year, we had weekly lesson overviews that we gave all the staff. Everybody has to complete it. Instead of a formal lesson plan, it's broken down by day, and there's different components of it. But if you at least start with a weekly lesson overview, we know what to expect when we walk into those classrooms. So the goal for that is to increase the focus on standards-based instruction with purposeful student success criteria, more authentic student engagement to decrease classroom and learning disruptions and ultimately increase student mastery of content. From here, this is an example of one of our weekly planning documents. If a teacher has more than one prep, this is broken down, or two, three preps, it's broken down. So it's very standard for them to complete. But on here, not only do you see the teacher, the content, they are expected to write out the full written standard. With that, from there, they have to make it into student success criteria, ICAN statements, students will be able to. And then from there, you know, what the essential question is. Targeted strategy for writing. A few years ago, when schools started the school improvement plan through the PLT work, we went big. We chose eight different writing strategies that we wanted to incorporate, and we ruled that out through professional development opportunities. And each month, we focused on that. So right now, we still are embedding those eight writing strategies into our daily instruction. But it's going to look different depending on if you're a first-year teacher versus a veteran teacher who's been with us for a few years. So this teacher, for example, is focusing on reads and graphic organizers. From here, it breaks it down for Monday through Friday, what they should be doing in the classroom. So if I go... All of my administrators go through weekly overviews that are turned in by staff members so that when we go in, we can be very strategic as to which classrooms we're hitting. Are we seeing what is in the weekly overview? Is the objective written on the board that's listed on the overview to make sure that we are in the same pacing that is listed in their overview? And the one level that we add this year was at the very bottom, the CASAS weekly questions. We want teachers to start thinking about the different levels of the questioning. Because once you advance from Level 1 to Level 3, you can see in the wording for who are specific people to evaluating statements. So it's just a different level for them. So the participant roles and implementation of practice, we have broken it down by the different roles in our building. So teachers attend collaborative content planning meetings to create and implement engaging lessons that align with our content standards. Students' expectation is that they're participating in engaging lessons and applying their understanding to assigned activities to improve their content mastery. The administrators, as I mentioned earlier, they're providing professional learning and feedback on those weekly lesson overviews and classroom walkthroughs. And then our ILT instructional leadership team and department leaders, they provide the customized support and guidance on weekly lesson overviews, and they facilitate that collaborative content planning meeting. So the different components of the change practice that we have decided to focus on for Quarter 1: Academic vocabulary posted to the content-specific Word Wall and Word of the Week. So this year, we do have a Word of the Week. We start... I put it in my Weekly Update to Parents every Friday so they know what we're going to focus on next week. We give them the definition, and then morning announcements. They're hearing that definition. They're hearing the word we're using in a sentence. And then from there, the teachers are asked to use it in their content area and how it applies. Today, or this week, the word is "challenge." So we have standard sentences that we give. My personal take on that was, I explained to them to challenge was, every time you want to challenge the dress code and the Code of Conduct, or not follow it, you are challenging, you know, what is happening. So just to try to get kids to connect the dots with us. Weekly overviews, they complete an upload to the Henson Staff SharePoint site the Friday before the planned week and display it outside the classroom door. And then a class agenda. So when we walk in, we should see the lesson activities, the student success criteria for the block displayed in the classroom. So here, we're going to talk a little bit about this cycle. So Cycle 1, Quarter 1. As I said, we don't want to add more things that they feel like it's another thing as we're just kind of going through the motions and a lot's on their plate right now, just trying to get to know the kids. So for Cycle 1, the very first thing, the staff rotations during back-to-school week. So this is the very first week back to school for staff and actually, the very first day for staff. We did four different sessions led by the leaders. ILT Department Chairs Administration. We focused on focused note-taking, similar to the AVID note-taking, but we're electing to call it focused note-taking. Classroom management and discipline that aligns with our disruptions that were occurring last year; CASAS levels of thinking that you saw on that weekly overview; And then vocabulary to tie in with the Word of the Week. We do have weekly grade-level department planning meetings during the school day. Half of it may be 45 minutes of their personal planning. The other 45 is content department plannings. Monthly faculty meetings. And then we had a fair day in-service review of the PLT work, where we're at and where we're moving to. So our future action steps, we do have an October full staff meeting. We will, as you see here, we're doing choice rotations. So we want to focus on that differentiation. I mentioned the eight strategies that we had embedded in over the past couple of years. But really, it has to be differentiated for our new teachers to see how to implement something into their classroom versus our veteran teachers who have done this work with us for a couple of years. We want them to get the PD that they need versus feeling like they have to sit through the same thing that they've already learned before. And that is just something that we have tried to listen to their concerns this year. So anticipated outcomes, we're going to have more rigorous and prepared, standards-based lessons. Increased student engagement. We're going to have less classroom environment disruptions. I can already say at the beginning of the school year, by this being our focus, we are seeing less disruptions in the classroom because we are seeing more engagement in those classrooms from the teachers and the students. And our new staff that have come on board, they're asking questions. If they don't know how to take something from the curriculum document and apply it in their classroom, they're asking us to come in and model with them. So that has helped us with minimizing the classroom disruptions. So we should see an increased student mastery of content. And from there, obviously, we would see higher assessment and diagnostic scores.
So some of the measuring tools that we're going to be using to monitor this progress, we have the iReady diagnostics that they take three times a year; The common assessments that the core classes will be taking with Canvas this year. We have the review of the student work protocol. That was something that we started last year with the PLT process. And it was something that was very beneficial for all of our staff, veteran, and new because it started different conversations that was helpful to support them. The referral data, looking at classroom disruptions on that component. Looking at the weekly lesson plan overview uploads. As Ms. Caballero said, that we are using administration and ILT to help support those teachers, especially the new ones with what standards-based education looks like and not just teaching from a textbook or from, you know, teachers pay teachers. And then department meeting attendance, looking at the teachers joining and actively participating in their own professional development. And then walkthrough data as the administration and ILT are supporting and walking through, giving that feedback for them to improve.
Okay. That was a lot. As I mentioned, there are several layers to school improvement planning. I appreciate you both sharing those on screen. It looks like, oh, yeah, they're just rolling right through these. But the reality of it is, it is work.
Oh, yeah.
And it involves very dedicated work at the end of the day. And you definitely need all hands on deck, including our parents as well. And so it's been essential for Matthew Henson to really share with their community what takes place within their building and then start to share resources that parents can utilize in order to also build capacity and reach that SMART goal that I referred to earlier. Along with preparing and planning with their professional learning team comes the work of Executive Directors to support this entire process. And so for myself, Jamie Coffin, and Rick Conley, it has looked like, very recently, meeting with principals individually to discuss their action steps and making sure that we are asking those key questions so that they are drilling down to exactly what it is that they're trying to accomplish and how they plan on doing so. You can list a whole lot of strategies, but what can you implement and sustain is always one of our driving questions. And so we meet with each of our principals monthly. Each of the three of us, we have about 14 schools. And so we rotate those meetings throughout the month in order to support them in this implementation process. It's... That's a heavy weight to carry on their shoulders ultimately. And they all have great teams. But every principal recognizes that, as the leader, it comes down to their decision-making and the vision that they have for the building. And so we want to make sure that they are comfortable as they're navigating their plans. And so providing them with professional learning to support the school improvement planning process is essential during this entire school year. We also have principal cohort meetings. There are four of them for this year to share and receive best practices from colleagues. So this looks like Matthew Henson inviting maybe four or five other principals to walk their building during guided visits and give them feedback on specific look-for's that are a part of their change practice. And then once they receive that feedback, they also are going to ask for feedback about what their leadership practices can be in order to support their staff in the next step of their implementation. And so that's the bulk of the principal cohorts. As Ms. Bum mentioned, all schools, including Matthew Henson, are looking at student work. We're following those targeted leadership protocols that were introduced last school year. There are also extended guided visits where staff from other schools will come and visit Matthew Henson and others, and this time, it may be fellow teachers. But unlike last year, principals are indicating in their invites to schools which staff they want to visit. So they're not saying, I would like Dr. Navarro to come. They're saying, I want to have the math resource come. Or can I have the second-grade math teacher come to provide me feedback as they're visiting my math classes? Because we've really been working with that particular team on whatever their change practice may be. So they're trying to be very selective about the groups that are coming in because they need very specific expertise to help guide the work and gather that feedback. But then finally, peer visits to facilitate with school personnel. So those are those in-house classroom visits that Matthew Henson and every school is conducting in order to gather data prior to company coming and really just to drive those staff rotations for professional learning that Ms. Caballero mentioned. If they're going to differentiate or customize their professional development, they have to be in classrooms, and they need to get feedback as they're visiting those classrooms to know what their natural next steps would be, so that they're not doing a one-size-fits-all for their entire school community. That is all from us.
So first, first, I'd like to thank Ms. Caballero, Ms. Bum. It is, it is not easy to come in and sit in a fishbowl and be vulnerable with your, with your data, right? But we certainly appreciate that, because we do believe that it's important to be transparent about where we are and, and the work that we need to do to, to improve, school improvement. It is a process. I think, as we just mentioned, a journey, if you will. It's a continuous journey of getting better and monitoring what we're doing, changing our change practice, if you will, but, but, but getting better and improving along the way. The monitoring piece is key. And so that is, that is why our executive directors are working super hard to, to help our principals stay on top of that. They have a lot on their plates, as you well know. And so, so it is, it can be easy to, to just kind of focus a little bit more in a particular area. So our executive directors are working hard to, to keep our principals in a place where they're, they're focused on all of the things they have to juggle. But this is a big, a big piece of it. School improvement is, is what, you know, our primary goal is anyway. And so, so we can't, we can't lose sight of that. And so, so our folks are absolutely working hard all day, every day. And, and again, we thank you ladies, you did a great job here, I think. But you're going to find out in a minute, because they're going to ask.
Don't do us like that, Dr. Jones. I tell you, we're relatively harmless.
Thank you all so much. This was fantastic. I will, oh, lots of questions. Okay, we'll just go down. I don't know who moves first. We'll start with Ms. Warren and work her way around.
Thank you. This was an excellent presentation. I'm very happy to have, you just laid it out wonderfully. I know it's a process, so thank you, thank you, thank you for what you're doing. I do have just one question, actually. So, one slide seventeen, I think, you mentioned anticipated outcomes. Increased student, let's see, less classroom environment disruptions. I'm curious, what positive intervention are you implementing at your school?
So, like many of the schools, we have P B I S programs. But really, for me, the number-one thing that we focus on the first week of school is building relationships with students. So if we have those relationships built with students, those positive interactions are going to come in. So it's a lot of conversations with students, a lot of involvement with our school counseling team, making sure that, you know, the teacher or the student, whatever may be going on in the classroom, they have support. Because sometimes you have those, you have those students who challenge you, and the adult may not necessarily know how to respond. So you're trying to build in that positive reinforcement for the staff member. Okay, this is a situation, this is how you handle it, now let's reflect. You know, what could you have done differently? And it's praising the adult as well as the kids when things go right in the classroom. It could just be little things with them. But a lot of it is, you know, focused on our P B I S program. And so our P B I S coordinator, he does a lot, the whole committee does a lot to come up with incentives and rewards and just positive, positive affirmations for not only our kids, because when we think about P B I S, a lot of it is focused on our students, but sometimes the adults need that just as much.
True. Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Ms. Williams, Ms. Caballero, and Ms. Bum. Ms. Caballero, I, you know, I, I've known you for a long time. You struggled with me through my middle school kid, right? So I know, you know, middle school work is admirable, because everybody loves the little kids. And for high school, it's more of an adult, you know, experience a little bit with the older kids. But middle school is like, it's the sticky wicket, right? And so, you know, I, I really do like what you have laid out. One of the things that is critically important to me is we can't do any of these work, this work without teachers. And so hearing that you guys have tried to tailor professional development for the veteran teachers as well as the new teachers, because it looks very different, I think is really good. Because they can all grow, but they need something different, so I was pleased to hear that. And then also, one of the things that, when you said, what are the adults changing to help the students, right? Sometimes the adaptability of making kids move without remembering that adults have to go first, because they model the behavior for students, I thought that was, that was really excellent. One of the things that I, I do have, one other thing I really like is the eight writing strategies, right? We know that our kids are struggling with just the ideation of what it means to start writing. I can't tell you how many kids say, I don't know what to write. And it's like, every sentence doesn't start with the, right? But just helping them with that ideation, I think, is a good pathway to college. It's a good pathway to being ready for college and for, you know, business or whatever. So I think that was really good. The one question I do have with all the things that you are doing is, what's the community engagement piece, like the, the parents, right? Because it's, it is often difficult to get parents to look at the, you know, look at the monthly newsletter, or, you know. So do you see the ability to be able to, like, have you seen any feedback from the parents? And do you, do you, do you imagine that growing or evolving a little bit? Because parents are, by the time you get to middle school, phew, parents are like, come on, you got to get it. But it also becomes a little, you know, difficult for them to balance that with the middle school kids.
Sure, so absolutely. So for those of you who have been on the board may recall that it was even spoken of in public forum, that at one point in time, I didn't have a P T O. I was struggling to get people to come to meetings. So I would show up to run the meeting, and I might have a parent or two show up. So last year, we really kind of honed in on what could we do differently to get more parents involved. And so with our P T O, we do have a fully functioning P T O now that started last year, and some of our members are rolling over into this year. They are vocal with me. We've built a great relationship that if they want to know something, or they want to see something, they let me know and we roll it out to them. But one of the things, as Ms. Thomas you mentioned, I did have your child in middle school. And middle school is a different walk of life. So over my twenty-seven years in middle school, I have learned that communication is key, not only with my staff and the kids, but as well as the adults. So what I do is, every Friday morning at seven A M., my parents do get a weekly newsletter from me every Friday, and I'm highlighting different things for them, things going well, things that are not going well, what I need their help on, issues I might be seeing. I am pushing out the word of the week to them, instructional things that we are seeing. And I'm getting feedback. I'm getting emails from them, asking me questions. They know if they have a question, they email me, if they can come to a P T O meeting. Our first P T O meeting is scheduled for October, and that becomes a big feedback piece for me, where parents are, it's like an open forum. Like, there are certain things that they want to know about, and so that's their time, especially for those parents who have never had a kid in middle school. And they wonder what is going on, why we won't let them come back past the front office, go eat lunch with their kid. So it's a lot of conversation. We do some community outreaches where, once a month, we do have, we call it a parents-student lunch, where we invite parents to come in and bring food from the outside to sit down and have conversations with their kids during their scheduled lunchtime. And during that time, members of the admin team, teachers who are on planning, instructional leadership team members, we walk around and we have conversations with the parents just to see how they're doing, any questions they might have. So the more parents I can get in to have conversations with, that has been a great tool for me. Since I do have children in Charles County Public Schools, I'm visible out there, and I have a lot of conversations that are not happening during my official work hours. So it's just being open to the questions that they may have and answering them the best I can.
Thanks so much. That's great. Note to all those Matthew Henson parents, go on over and have lunch.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anything, Ms. Thomas? No? Okay. Ms. Smith?
Well, one, thank you so much for the presentation. I totally echo my colleague's sentiments. Really appreciate this style of presentation, which we're beginning to see more of, which is, you know, of course, hearing from like C C P S, like our executive team, but also drilling down specifically into a school to better understand what it looks like. I think it's definitely helpful for the board, but absolutely helpful for parents. Even as a parent of two middle school students to kind of walk through the weekly plan, I was like, goodness. So really appreciate understanding kind of what exactly happens at that building level, at that teacher level. So thank you for that. I have two questions and two comments. My first question kind of dabbles into what Ms. Samisha Thomas was talking about in terms of like parent engagement. But specifically, you were mentioning the professional learning teams and how they review data, and they're developing SMART goals. But also, you mentioned the collective efficacy statements that you all end up drafting. Just curious, like, what's the role of parents in kind of working to support either review or comment or iteration on some of those statements as you all are working to develop them? Just curious, you mentioned kind of the hand-in-glove relationship between like staff, admin, and working with parents. I'm curious if there's a role for them at that point in the process.
So last year, after Dr. Navarro had her state of the schools, and we had a representative from Henson at that event to answer any questions, kind of go through what we were doing as a school. We do publish it on our website, and then it is a focal point for a P T O meeting so that if there are questions, if they want to, if they want to see something different, that is one of their key opportunities during that P T O meeting to share it. And a lot of times, parents don't want to be the person to give feedback, whether positive or negative. So sometimes they take it through our P T O members to give to us, which is fine. But the, but the more feedback we get, the better, and, I mean, because really, it is a partnership. So sometimes, you know, parents will ask, you know, have you considered, are you able to? So a lot of that is driven from primarily those P T O meetings, where I have those dialogues with the parents. But at the same time, if they ask something of me, I then take it back to the, to that P L T team, which is made up of administrators, I L T members, and teachers, and say, this is what was posed to me, do you think this is feasible? But at the same time, it's going back to that parent, saying, we thank you for the feedback. We might be able to add this in, or we can't turn this around right now. So, and a lot of it is just feedback continuing even to into the next quarter, the way that our cycles are working this year.
Certainly. Appreciate that feedback loop. I think sometimes the answer is yes, absolutely, we can include. And sometimes it's just, it doesn't make sense at this point, and here's why. But at least being able to explain that to whoever parent had the suggestion. My second question was about the, this is about the school improvement process, or continuous school improvement process. I'm curious how this then informs the school improvement plan that you all end up drafting and submitting to Central Office.
So for me, it's a, it's a, it's the same document. It really is, because our P L T group really focuses on the school improvement plan. And it really goes back to even where we talked about our data. So Ms. Bum talked about like the, the math and the reading data, and at the bottom, we put the classroom disruptions, because we take our school improvement plan academic, but then we embed the climate into that. So it becomes a merged document. But I, Dr. Jones, I think you went back to that. Yeah. Right, so here, you know, as we're going through the, the problem of the practice, you know, really kind of honing in, I, I'm sure that what we're doing at Henson is probably looks a lot different than what they might be doing at Davis, for example. So it really is just taking that school improvement team. I utilize the same members of the P L T through my school improvement. Now, the, the one thing that we, I do with my team is, as Ms. Williams said, I can't do this alone. So I do a lot of feedback from my, my Henson team, saying, what is it that we need to do? That S I P document is a living document, so it's constantly changing. So if we see in quarter one that is not working, and, you know, maybe we have to, when we go through the next cycle, maybe we need to change things up. Maybe my staff is rocking those weekly overviews, so then we're going to change it up. So it, it really is the same thing, but it's embedded in with one another.
Certainly. And just quickly, before I conclude the, the two comments, so thank you for that response. Really appreciated hearing more about like the broader view of how you all are looking at professional learning and kind of incorporating both the novice teachers as well as the veteran teachers. I know Ms. Thomas touched upon that earlier. But even looking at the weekly planning document, it made me think through the chronic absenteeism challenges that we're seeing across the country, across the country. And I'm like, I think if a parent were able to see the ways in which educators are breaking down lessons, and of course, in theory, we know, there's a lesson, there's, there's a plan for each single day, and my child has to be there to receive the education. It's not enough for them to check Canvas or to check kind of online. They have to physically be in the seat to gain the information in order to progress timely. But to be able to see information broken down in this way, and you realize, if my kid is out on Monday, look at all that they've missed, and we're jumping right into Tuesday by the time they get there. And then what's their ability to catch up on what they missed on Monday and still be able to progress with the week? I think that was just a, a really strong kind of slide, to be able to lay out sort of how educators are kind of going through and progressing through their lesson plans, so appreciated it.
Thank you.
That's just one class.
And that's just one teacher. Yeah, and one class. Multiplied by times, right?
Times the number of classes that your child has. Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you again.
No, I'm good, thank you. Just want to thank you for the presentation and all the work you do. But I thought this was really good. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Hancock?
Sure. Again, thank you for the presentation. It's really cool to see what you guys are doing. And I just have one question. You are addressing two of the biggest issues that we hear a lot about. One is the, the lack of proficiency on assessment tests and school disruptions. So the only question I have, and I love what you have put out there. The only question I have is, I often hear from a lot of people, so we have to have assessment tests to see where we are. But the one thing I always hear a lot is, how do you, how do you teach a student without teaching them to test, but also teach them to learn? So how do you find that distinction? Because I, my son, I use as an example, he's a straight A student, and I ask him about M C A P tests, and he goes, Dad, that is hard. That is hard. But he's, he's a straight A student. So how, that's my only question, if you could answer that.
I don't know if I can, to be honest with you. It's difficult. I mean, in my own household, I have a child who, you ask how the M C A P was, and it was fine. You know, it's hard. But, and, and she's an accelerated learner, then I go to my son, who's an I E P student, and you're trying to ask them questions, because essentially, they're taking the same kind of test. And it's like, I don't know, like, it's just, it's, it's so big. It's hard to kind of dissect it. I wish there was a straight, you know, a straight answer, but really, it's, you, right now, you can't teach to a test. You can't memorize facts to be able to do something. You might be able to do that on some of your basic tests. You can't do that on a common assessment test that you take in math. So I think that's difficult to do, but at the same time, I think it is teaching students strategies that to use in, in their day-to-day instruction, when they're doing assignment, when they're taking a test, that you automatically want them to try to apply that when they take the M C A P. You know, if you have four choices, knock out the ones that you know are definitely not correct. So I think it's more like those test-taking strategies that we used to do, you know, a long time ago, that we focused on. Some of the teachers embed that into their instructions. So I, I think it almost is kind of going back to the basics to teach them how to do that.
Sure.
I'm sorry. I wanted to piggyback. The, our back-to-school theme that we've done every year has been back to the basics. And it is, here's what you need to learn content-wise, but also, these are strategies that we can use in all the contents and apply them, like Ms. Caballero said, on the assessment. So like our eight writing strategies that we do, one of them is C E R, a claim evidence reasoning. You give the claim, which is the right answer, your evidence and your reasoning. And our kids can do the claim, but that's level one. It's extending their responses to those higher levels. And I think that that's where we see the difference between those developing learners and our proficient learners. And so getting them to go to that next level, and that's why we have that focus with our weekly plans of what strategies are you using? Because the language is the same in all the contents, regardless of what you teach. But then also, the, the levels of questions for the staff to be, I'm not just asking basic facts for the kids to then basic answer. I'm making them think and write and respond a little bit longer with a higher thought process.
So just to piggyback on what Ms. Bum just said there, because I think that's a, a, a great segue, because what she's talking about is teaching the standards. And so ideally, the, the standards, the Common Core standards are aligned to the assessment, the M C A P assessment. So if you teach the standards, and our, our teachers get more and more consistent and more efficient with teaching the standards, then the test will take care of itself. I mean, that, that's, that's ideal. But then you do add the test-taking strategies and those kinds of things in, you include that in, in the instruction. And so, so that's, that's the goal. We certainly are a work in progress, but, but teaching the standards, we believe, is, and we're on the right track going in that direction to get better with teaching the standards, and then sentences aligned with the, with the test, ideally, you know, the test will take care of itself. So that's.
So, you know, people, this is a constant thing about, like, is it bad to have to teach to the test? And, and my answer to, to, to fellow educators and to parents is, well, depends how good the test is. If it is a test that, and, and our state assessment has, and I think you hear this from our educators, talking around the writing standard. The writing and doing it well is the most high cognitive activity that a student can do. And so that is one of the reasons why, as a system, we talk about writing as a vehicle to understand and to have students understand their thinking of what they're learning. And our state assessment, you know, as, as you know, state assessment is an adaptive assessment, which means that it doesn't release a lot, doesn't release items. Which means that it doesn't release a lot, doesn't release items. So as an educator and as you are supporting the learning of your peer educators, you do want to get release items from time to time to understand exactly how the assessment is structured. And right now, the assessment that we have at the state level does not release items, a lot of items. And so while we are teaching to the standards and making sure that more and more of our classrooms are teaching at that standard level, and I think the standards of how you get to those points are rigorous pathways, we also want to have a view into how the assessment is designed. And that comes, and if I were back in the classroom, I would want to be able to see that. Because I want, I want to have as many opportunities to have students be in the assessment environments that they're going to be tested in during my class time and, and sort of get them used to those kinds of pieces. So that's an important piece. And I would say, it just depends on the quality of the assessment. If it's a strong assessment, if it has open-ended responses as well as, you know, opportunities for you to demonstrate your learning, great. If it's not a well-constructed assessment, you know, I think that's where educators have sort of fault with that. But as you know, we're going through a process of potentially looking at a new state assessment. And so I think parents always ask, and as, as, you know, sitting parents as well as educators, they ask us, what should I be following? And we talked about that last time. And, and, and so the diagnostic assessments, because there's still diagnostic assessments in middle school for I-ready, tend to be more palable. But I also think it's extremely important to look at the everyday assessments, the common assessments that they have at the district, as well as the, the homework design. And then I would say, across the country, there's variability in, in assessments that are common, like nationally-normed assessments, to state-level assessments and to grades. And grades have always been higher for students than their state assessment or their national assessment results. I mean, that just kind of bears out. And I think that is more around the everyday practice and the opportunities that you have to demonstrate your knowledge and how people view what you need to learn, all the way to an assessment that you really don't have as much access to. So.
Thank you, thank you. And I would just like to add, the, the 10% increase on the MCAP, I think it's a, it is a very aggressive, but it is a very smart goal. It is achievable. And if you can do that, and I think someone needs to copy what you did and implement it.
Yeah, we replicate it, absolutely.
Throughout the county. So, thank you so much. I, I appreciate all of you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. I could jump in quickly, Mr. Hancock, because you had the same point, you stole my thunder, but I won't hold against you. Because that was what I was looking at, the comparison of Slide nine and Slide 17, where the data doesn't look good, but then you're also looking at increasing the, the student mastery. And those two things aren't always the same. And similar story, I have a now college student who's 3.9, that's very high achieving. Candidly, may not be challenged enough, you know, based on her grades, but struggled with a lot of these assessments. And so based on the assessments, that was not a good indicator of how well she would have done in college. And so I just want to reiterate, we've beat this drum several times. This is one isolated, well, not even isolated, but one tool to determine, and I understand why there needs to be something to try to measure students. But then we've also talked a lot here that the, the ball and the goal is always changing. And so you can't, and then Ms., Ms. Samisha Thomas made this point earlier. You can't measure students from K through 12 with the same tool, because it's changing so much. And so by the time they get to 12th grade, you may not really understand, based just on assessments, how well they're doing or capable of doing. So I just wanted to just kind of footstomp that point. I think that's important for people to know. Right, Ms. Kramer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you all for being here. Good to see you again, Principal Caballero and Ms. Williams, Dr. Jones, and nice to see you, Ms. Bum, and appreciate all the information that you all provided. I have a couple of, of questions, but I first just want to say thank you for being transparent. And to Dr. Jones's point, it's not easy to, you know, to do that when, you know, the numbers don't necessarily look, you know, the way you would like them to look. But I think it's important to take ownership of it, and I think that's what you're doing. Because how else can you tackle a problem unless you first acknowledge it exists? And so I think that's just really, you know, can't be overstated how important that is. And I can clearly see from the presentation, the detail that went into this, the, you know, obviously work behind the scenes that no one knows about. Probably some late nights, early mornings, some lost hair, probably, all kinds of things, you know?
All the things.
Because it's just so detailed, right? And it's so, just like the intentionality just jumps out. Like, you know, this is a well-thought-out plan. It's not just checking a box, saying we're doing something, you know? And so I really appreciate that. So the data, I have a question about the data on number nine. Is this your I-ready data from spring? Is that your latest data from, okay, on Slide nine, okay? And is this the first year that you're implementing this particular strategy or this particular plan?
As far as like the weekly overviews?
Yes.
So we use the weekly overviews, well, I expect the teachers to do them last year. It wasn't a primary focus. But then once we looked at the classroom disruption data from last year, because during the Leadership Institute, and we were given climate data as we kind of dug into it as to why we might have had this problem, we had a lot of conversation of, well, most of the referrals kind of came from those teachers who did not have a strong plan walking in there. Last year, we really focused on those eight writing strategies and just tried to kind of keep embedding those. So we didn't want to kind of just push those aside and move to something new. So this is more of a focused plan for us this year with the weekly overviews and adding those levels of questioning at the bottom. Because they can go through the curriculum documents, and they can copy and paste things into a weekly overview so that we know what they're supposed to be doing. But there has to be an intention as to what you're going to physically do in that classroom with the students. So it makes them think a little bit more. So for example, the example that we gave you was a Lit Lab 2. So if I'm a teacher and I have a Lit Lab 2 and a Lit Lab 3, it's going to look different. Just like if I'm teaching my, a math class in sixth grade, and I'm teaching sixth grade math, and I'm teaching the sixth grade honors. It's going to look a little bit different for the pacing-wise. So it's trying to make sure that you're keeping up with that pace, but being intentional with what you do.
Right, okay, makes sense. And I do love the two birds, one stone approach. I mean, you know, and obviously, if there's a lot of disruptions, you know, content may be getting missed, even if they are following, you know, your, your plan. So I love that. And obviously, that's working smarter, not harder, right? You can tackle two problems with one, one strategy. And then I just wanted to clarify, is this something that you, is the expectation for all teasers, or is just your ELA and your math teachers?
All teachers.
So it's everybody, so it's across the board. Love that, too. The buy-in is super important for a whole school approach.
And to be honest with you, I'm blessed to have the team that I have at Henson, as some board members have come to visit me. Henson is a unique place. And if you haven't come, please come, so you can see what it looks like. But, you know, the, the community and just the teachers and the staff, it doesn't matter what your role is in the building. It really is a team approach to everything that we do. And I can't stress enough, this is just not me doing something. It's really the team and making sure that everybody is comfortable to rolling it out to everybody.
No, appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you for, you know, this presentation. And as I did that, my computer went off. I conclude, I, I, I agree with all, everything my colleague says. I want to ask this question. The community tutoring program, the reason I ask about a community tutoring program, because you have parents that's out there, you have community leaders that's out there, you have federal government people out there, you got military people out there that might be willing to come in and help us. Because I do believe that having the education just don't belong just to us. It belongs to the whole community. And so therefore, if it belongs to the whole community, why not bring the community in to help us with this? And having a strategy where we train them, not they doing on the, we train them how, the initial training, how they do it. So we'll reach out to retired teachers, high school honor students, college students, or whomever wants to come on. So what it initially does is, the teacher will identify their, their students who need this help. And then we will bring tho, those volunteers that want to come in and help us, and we'll bring them into the school. And they would be, you know, it's after-school program. Either you could do it for the weekend also. So it's either or. And so it's up to the school which one they want to, how they want to do it. But I think we should bring in a program like this, because we're not going to find a lot of teachers right now, because we are in the lack of having teachers. People who want to tutor, they want to charge. So, you know, we in this bind of where we need to spend our dollars in educating our students instead of having, having, paying people to come in. We actually can do this ourselves with our community, because a thriving community has to have, have, you have to be with a thriving education system. So if we have both of those, we can do this. So if we can come together and just think about it, we could send out, you know, a notice and say, community, who wants to come in and help us? You have that initial talk. Mr. Jones sat there, come down with, I got a plan for you. I can give it to you. You can tweak it however you want to, but I got a plan for you. So you can tweak it and just tell them what we need, and you'll see how many buy-ins you get. You, this room could be filled, or our school could be filled, with people who actually want to do. Because when people want to help you, it's always, they want something in return. And what we can provide for them in return is, we teaching them how to tutor their children, or their grandchildren, or their nieces and nephew. We giving them a valuable tool also. So it's, you know, it's both, it's both helping each other. So I think we should think outside the box a little bit and think that we can bring in some things like that, because that would be valuable. Because that actually is community-focused. And if you get community coming in, helping the education, education happen, our community will thrive. So, you know, that's some of the things that I think, you know, we should, you know, think outside the box on and stuff.
So to our community who's listening and watching, the millions of views we have.
Oh, yes, thank you.
But Washington has spoken. Yes, the ball is in your court. So please feel free to reach out to us if you are interested in tutoring at your local school or interested in volunteering, maybe we'll start there. We have a community engagement office who is instrumental in getting parents or getting community members opportunities to work with our schools. And we will be glad to welcome them with open arms and, and put them in the right direction. Get them all background-checked and all of that first, and, and, and send them to a place where they would love to, to help us out. We receive.
Okay. Community tutoring program, parents and community.
Got something written up, send it to the butt-wash.
All right, thank you.
No, Ms. Bum, did you use to teach at Summers?
Yeah, she taught me in eighth grade.
Yes, they under, one of mine.
The year of progress, yeah.
Finally, not me this time.
Great presentation. Thanks a lot. And to the community tutoring point, there are a lot of student organizations that tutor other high schoolers. So if, if we can perhaps integrate, integrate that with middle schoolers. Because in one of my clubs, we had a plan that we would go to one of the middle schools and then show presentations. And that's something, that's something to consider, like students as well as parents, you know? But yeah, thank you for the presentation. It was really uplifting.
Thank you all so much.
Fantastic. Great work, great work.
All right, colleagues, we are adjourned until 6:00 PM for public forum.
We get a break.
You're welcome. All right, welcome back, everyone. And we will begin with the public forum. Mr. Schwartz?
I will read the rules for public forum. Speakers should identify themselves, state which objective point, limited to three minutes or less. Board members should not be expected to respond during the form of statements made by speakers. When appropriate, CCPS staff may address the speaker's concerns directly. Statements related to Charles County Board of Education agenda items or any education-related topic with the following limitations. Personal matters, family or potential appeals, comments or comments regarding the actions or statements of individual staff with the private lives of any individual are not appropriate topics. Proper language and decorum are required at all times. This evening, we have three people signed up in person in one virtual. The first speaker this evening is Chelsea Short.
Do I have a go, or I just start? My name is Chelsea Short, and I teach third grade at Wade. I'm in the middle of a lesson. I call on student A. Student B, who I've already called on before student A, gets upset because I didn't call on him again. He starts banging his fist on his desk. I plan to ignore this behavior, because that's what the behavior specialist recommended. He escalates to kicking his desk so hard that it's knocking into other student desks. He adds yelling to this kick. Since it is a tension-seeking behavior, the response is still supposed to be to ignore this behavior, because if I respond, then he's going to do this again the next time. But if I don't respond, the rest of the class is now forced to try and learn through this disruptive behavior. No one is being hurt, so I shouldn't call for admin or a counselor or a school psych, because I also know that there's another kid in the building who's either eloping or assaulting, causing harm to a classmate or a teacher. Ignoring this behavior sends a message that it's okay to the rest of my class. And most of the students are still feeling unsafe, because this kid has in the past tossed his desk in anger. I prefer my kids to feel safe, so I decide that I'm going to de-escalate the student. I walk over to him, and I let him know that he has two minutes to pick a strategy from our emotional control center, or I will pick for him. Sometimes he yells louder and slams the doors, the door repeatedly while waiting for the timer to get close to zero before picking. Knowing this pattern, I set out two options for him at one minute. He picks one. And when he calms down, we talk about the size of the problem, if this was in our control or not, and a better response for next time. He asks for a hug, and I give him one, and he returns to his work. We're all really happy that he successfully returned to his work, but I just lost 20 minutes of instructional time, and I have four other kids who cycle through the same big feelings. So daily, this can happen between five and six times, which means that my class is losing out on hours of instructional time daily. Now I have to write a referral, communicate home, communicate with admins, special education teachers, counselors, psychs, support people at Central to try and develop or refine the plan for success. I'm doing all of this instead of grading and planning. And remember that this is times four. This is a pretty common makeup of a classroom in Charles County. So let's set aside the moral dilemma and discuss the academic impact. It's no secret that we have a large number of students who are struggling to read. And I would encourage you all to look at the amount of instructional time that's lost in the grades where we are teaching students how to read. Then when you see the shocking amount of time that we lose to student behaviors, I encourage you to look at the policies that restrict IEP teams, student support teams, and admin for providing alternative placements in extreme cases, and appropriate consequences for less extreme cases where parents and students are held accountable. I want to be clear that the problem is not that people are not doing their jobs or following protocol. We're utilizing our de-escalation training, move-this-world, and our sort of circles. But those solutions are not enough. The problem continues, because the supports in place are ineffective for the quantity of behaviors that we're expecting, experiencing. While this protocol, to call someone to be unsafe, excuse me, why is the protocol? To call somebody else in an unsafe situation as if it's okay for that person to be hit or bit. Nobody in our building deserves to be hit, no matter what their title is. Our Wade team is phenomenal, and I wouldn't want anyone else to support me when I'm in a challenging situation. I'm speaking out for my colleagues across the county and not just my school. It isn't the people, it's the protocols and the policies. Our students and staff deserve a safe space to teach and learn. And I do have solutions, which I will share with you in an email, but I can't cover all that in three minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Short. Please feel free to email anything you have. We'd love to see it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kevin Gibson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Kevin Gibson. I teach local, state, and national government at Henry Lakey High School. I think the advantage of having an updated and uniform county grading policy is that it ensures equity across classes and across buildings. As the matter lies today, different classrooms, different teachers, and different schools all have individualized grading practices. In class today, as a part of looking at local government, we discussed the board's proposed changes to the county grading policy. Of the hundred or so students I spoke with today, and the many teachers, almost all find this policy acceptable. While it may not be perfect, and there are certainly parts that some people will take exception to, I think the advantages outweigh the disadvantages. The benefit that a small number of students will experience from this change are well worth any perception of grade inflation. At the last board meeting, Mr. Lowndes stated that teachers would enter grades into the grade book, and those grades would then be rounded up to 50% at the end of the quarter. However, the potential problem with this method is that some grades may be earned for lack of good faith effort. For example, a student may take a 10-question quiz and only answer two questions without making effort on the remaining questions. If the teacher enters a 20%, will it then be automatically rounded to a 50% at the end of the quarter? How will the Office of Accountability know the difference between assignments on which students made good faith effort and should be rounded, and ones where they did not, which should not be rounded? I would urge the board to pass these proposed changes to the grading policy. However, I would encourage you to also provide clarity about your intent. Do you intend to round every student's quarter grade to no lower than a 50%? Or is this policy based on individual assignments, in which case a student could earn less than a 50% for the quarter? At this point, after having read the policy closely and listened to the presentation, as a teacher, your intent is not clear. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson.
Our next speaker is Will Lewis.
Good evening. I want to briefly say one thank you before I make my comments. I do want to thank the board for reconsidering the pride resolution last month. Um, I do want to thank the board for reconsidering the pride resolution last month. Um, I had several students come to me and say that how proud they were that that resolution was, was reconsidered, and that it is, and that June, for the first time, will be Pride Month here at CCPS, so that we can celebrate the total diversity of our students throughout the course of the school year. The comment I want to make is about the grading policy. Again, um, there's been a lot of work put in to the grading policy to get us to this point where we are near for a vote, and I do want the board to vote for the 50% rule. I know there are some who feel the 50% rule is inflating grades or giving students, um, something they didn't earn. But in my 13 years now teaching for Charles County Public Schools, there are two types of students who earn grades lower than 50. A student who unfortunately just doesn't care, and that student is not really a student we're going to do much right now. But the other student who's earning much less than a 50% is a student who has something else going on, and we don't know always what that something else is. Sometimes it's a family matter that's distracting them, and it's pulled into their schoolwork. Sometimes, at the high school level, they've taken on a second job to help their family, and they're trying to figure out that schedule and what that schedule looks like, and it's hurting their schoolwork for that quarter, or maybe that, or maybe that semester. Uh, sometimes there's just something going on that they don't feel comfortable sharing, and in one quarter, a student can really almost do themselves in for the whole year. If you get a 10% or a 15% or a 20% for a quarter, it is desperately hard to recover from that. And by having a 50% rule in place, it gives that student a lifeline. That student has a chance to recover. That student can fix whatever problem is, is going on, or figure out how to balance whatever's going on that's driving their grade down, and they can work with the staff, and they can get themselves to a passing grade for the quarter. I know it's something that everybody is comfortable with, because we feel, well, you get the grades you earned, but I've rarely seen a student get a 14% in a, in a class of mine that they really, that's what they truly know. That's what they truly earned. They know more than that. But for whatever reason, the paperwork comes out that that's what their grade is. I personally believe that bumping the grade at the end of the quarter makes the most sense, because for, a parent can look at their grades all along, throughout the, throughout the quarter, and see what they earned on each individual assignment, and then you bump it at the end, but that's a decision for the board to make. I don't think we need to fight to. That's a decision for you to make, but I think the 50% rule just makes sense. Um, in my time, in 13 years teaching here, I can think of very few students who got a 50, a 50, and a 50, who were able to pull it together in the fourth quarter and pass. And you know what? If they, they were able to do that in the fourth quarter, if they were able to pull it together after getting a 50, and a 50, and a 50, that means they were learning along the way. It just wasn't demonstrated in the grade book. So I want to thank the board for their vote to make June Pride Month here for CCPS, and urge you to support the 50% rule as part of the grade change policies. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Thank you. We have one person virtually who did not show up for the session, so that's our last speaker.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Schwartz. Thank you to our speakers. All right, Dr. Navarro, um, she will give us a presentation on the renaming of Indian
Good evening, board. So I don't have a full presentation, because, um, this is a, an item that the, um, that the board requested to have, um, come forward so that you can have a discussion about, uh, the topic and what you want to do with it. So I'm going to quickly go through. Yep, and provide you just a quick background, um, of how we got here. So, um, as you are aware, over the past several years, the Board of Education has entertained, uh, multiple, uh, speakers who have queued up, uh, the issue of wanting to rename some of our schools for a variety of reasons. Um, in 2023, the Board of Education, this Board of Education revised its naming policy, um, 7230, to include a process to be followed regarding school renaming. In February 2024, the Charles County National Association for the Advancement of Colored People came, uh, and made a request and public comment that the school board, uh, look to rename schools named after individuals who were slave owners, and requested that the board begin this process following its new revised policy with, uh, General Smallwood Middle School. Currently, just a reminder for our public, the board is currently in the process of receiving public input and is following the process to make a decision of whether to move forward or not, uh, for the renaming of General Smallwood Middle School. Additionally, in the months of April, May, and June of 2024, the board heard from several community members who also requested that the board consider, uh, renaming Indian Head Elementary School. And so that is where we are today. Um, I just want to remind you of the policy, um, and a couple of highlights. The board may initiate or consider requesting to rename an existing school facility at, at its discretion. We are, um, going through this process, so I know you know the policy. And then, uh, one thing to consider as you have a conversation about what you would like to do, um, is if there is an interest in, uh, continuing to look into this matter, the board shall direct the superintendent to detail a process that engages the specific school community regarding the naming process of its school facility, and it also includes a cost analysis of the renaming. And I just want to go back to the previous slide where it talks about, um, if that is your wish, um, what the superintendent has to bring forward as a, as a full presentation to the board. So it clearly says that prior to deciding to rename a school currently named after a person, the board shall also consider, and it has four different bullets that you can read, um, on the things that I also must present besides a financial impact statement for you. Um, so I will end with this and let the chair, um, take this on.
Thank you very much, Dr. Navarro. Any questions, comments? Okay. So this time, Dr. Navarro, you'd like us to poll to see who'd like to proceed, correct?
Yes, I think, I think the...
Next step, yeah, the, to detail the process. Okay. All right. Uh, the chair will entertain a motion to direct the superintendent to detail a process that engages the specific school community, in this case, Indian Head, uh, regarding renaming of its school facility, that, and that includes a cost analysis of the renaming. Is there a motion? Mr. Wilson? Seconded by Ms. Kramer. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Mr. Hancock.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to explain my, my vote before I, before we take it, uh, just to provide some explanation as to why I will, um, be voting against this. The main reason is because we have one, we're already going through one renaming process at the moment, um, that, uh, won't be complete until November at the earliest, I believe.
Yes, sir.
Before that decision is made. Um, and, um, not saying that this should not be brought forward, but me personally, I think we're moving at a very rapid pace, so I just wanted to throw that out there. And I, I want to thank a lot of people, especially, uh, the members of the, um, Piscataway Canoe Tribe, um, and Chief Swan and, uh, his members for, for bringing this issue to light, and I certainly respect and understand where he's coming from, and this is no slight against, against them at all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Ms. Thomas?
I think it's appropriate at this time that we do consider this motion and really all, as, as a board, think about it. Um, at the state level, there was a decision to change even the highway that intersects down on that south, southern side of the county, um, and there were a, a variety of reasons why that really supported what we've heard from many of the constituents in the county. So I do think, you know, taking that in consideration, even at the, at the state level, there was a decision made to make a change because it was the right thing to do. I do, um, I'm, I'm proud of this board for making a decision to, to listen to our constituents and to make a decision in this vein.
Thank you, and I'll echo that, Ms. Thomas, because it, the rationale for me, um, the Piscataway people spoke very passionately about what this means to them. This is not just a case of I don't like the name. This, this particular name is hurtful, and it has a very strong negative history that I'm, I'm not willing to ignore. And Mr. Hancock raises a good point. We are in the middle of, of one renaming consideration, which has not been voted on. However, they would not be going simultaneously. They're at different stages, so they certainly would be staggered. And as you all know, um, Smallwood, at the earliest, we'd be voting in November, even if we voted in the affirmative, it's not something that would happen overnight. So just keeping that in mind, I, I certainly think we can consider more than one. Yes, Ms. Hancock, I'm sorry, Ms. Hancock.
Ms. Butler Washington. Mr. Hancock! Somebody tell us. Washington, I'm sorry. But, um, I, I just want to express and state that, um, um, just like the, uh, General Smallwood, uh, that it's offensive, uh, to me, uh, I recognize what the, um, what the Indian tribe have said, and I recognize, uh, that if it's offensive to me, I, uh, recognize it's offensive to them, so I don't want to be, uh, one-sided, saying we're due for one and we're due for all, but, um, I know the hurt, and, um, and they know the hurt, so, um, I just want to go on the record and just say that, um, it is, you know, you read up on the history, you, you, you read what you read, and you know what you know. So we know it, so we just want to do right by what, uh, we're supposed to do, because it's in all of our hearts to do what's right for all, for the students in, and for our community, so we just want to do what's right for everyone.
Thank you. Okay. I'm not sure who was first between you.
I will defer to Ms. Smith.
No, I appreciate hearing from all my colleagues in terms of, you know, where they may stand on this particular, um, motion. Uh, I most certainly will be supporting it. Uh, as someone who lives on the sort of western side of the county, uh, while we represent as a collective all students in Charles County, we represent all schools, all teachers, um, as someone who lives on the western side, most certainly I will be standing in the affirmative to support this, um, to the point that was already raised by the chair. Yes, we already are currently reviewing, um, one renaming, but again, they are on two different trajectories. Um, this is just a motion to charge the superintendent, beginning to engage the community, so we can better understand which way we should proceed, uh, given what may come out of those discussions. So I believe it's on two separate tracks. Um, this is something that totally needs to be done, so I will stand in the affirmative.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Dr. Navarro, for bringing this forward. Um, I will agree, um, obviously, I support the motion, and so I will be supporting, um, the vote to charge the superintendent with gathering the information from the community. I think it's the very least we can do, um, since our community has spoken, um, about, um, what the implications are to them in terms of the naming of the school and the history, um, of why the school was named, which is part of our policy, um, on when we consider naming. The reason, um, as well as, uh, the degree into which it affirms our school's mission, um, and the school's community values and the, the board's values. And for me, um, the way that, um, you know, the, the tribal members of the Piscataway tribe have spoken about how this impacts them personally, um, and how they feel that, um, it speaks to the values of the school system, um, is something that, you know, I don't, I don't personally, you know, want to continue, um, and so I will be voting to support this.
Any last comments? All right. Um, it's been moved and seconded that, um, the board direct the superintendent to engage the community regarding the possible renaming of Indian Head Elementary School. All in favor? All right, and opposed? All right, the motion passes.
Uh, one additional item. Wanted to get a sense when, um, because we are going through the Smallwood process, wanted to get a sense when we do the, um, historical background to bring to the board if it's okay to bring it sometime between November and December, so that we're able to have some time to, um, do some research.
Yes, I was going to say if we could maybe conclude Smallwood in November and then bring this in December.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Navarro, and thank you, board.
Thank you so much.
Right. Look at us being on time. All right, I love it. All right, all that remains now are, are three action items. Uh, the first, you heard earlier from, um, Ms. Acton and Ms. Fisher Davis regarding the intercategory budget change request for fiscal year 2025. Is there a motion to accept, uh, proof? Ms. Thomas? Proof, thank you. Is there a second? Ms. Brenda Thomas? All right, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. All right, that is unanimous. Next up is the grading policy, which, um, Mr. Lowndes, if you could please join us just in case there are any questions. Uh, we've gotten a lot of, well, had a lot of discussion regarding this, and, um, will Mr. Roberts be joining you, Mr. Lowndes, or no?
I'm sorry.
And will Mr. Roberts be joining you, or no?
He will not.
He will not? Okay. All right, no worries. All right.
I got his information.
Okay. All right.
But I also want to make clear, uh, that this policy, no matter what is voted on, would, would not take effect until, it's not this year, it's the following year.
Yes. So school year 25, 26?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so, um, first, let me start, because as I said, we've discussed this, um, and just reiterating what we talked about at the last meeting, a lot of the hesitancy, at least the concerns we've heard, were around the minimum 50%. Does anyone have any specific questions or comments? Maybe we could start there, because I didn't hear anything about any other parts. Yes, Mr. Verk?
Uh, thank you. Um, I wanted to ask about how this rule works in accordance to its, um, how it works when you consider late submissions. So, um, I know we deduct points when something is turned in, but it's turned in one or two days or three days late, and, um, for certain classes, depending on whether it's A-level honors or AP, it ranges from 75 to 50%, right? And, um, I wanted to know if, if something is turned in with the 50% rule, assuming hypothetically, if it's, uh, um, full effort, 0%, if it's turned in that one day late, does it become a 25% or is it?
So the lowest, if you, if you look the way the, it was written, it says, "For all grade levels, no grade lower than 50% may be entered on any assignment or assessment as long as the student has demonstrated good faith effort."
Okay.
The lowest that that student could, if they demonstrated good faith effort, the lowest that they could get was a 50%.
All right, so the late work, okay, thank you.
Ms. Kramer and Mr. Hancock.
So just wanted to, um, clear up, so Mr. Gibson, um, made a good point about, um, clarifying whether it's, and I hope I captured this correctly, Mr. Gibson, um, the, uh, individual grade, or, or maybe Mr. Lewis brought this up, the individual grade versus rounding up at the end, but it looks like based on the policy, when I'm rereading it, um, we, this would be per assignment, so not rounding up a quarter grade. If, if the individual assignments, you, you could only get a minimum 50%, but at the end of the quarter, the quarter grade was still under 50%, that's what it is.
Correct. That's currently the way it's written, and I'm glad you actually brought that up, because in talking to Mr. Roberts and talking to the, the folks that we do, who do our grade book, there's two types of 50% that are applied consistently. One is, uh, quarter grade, where at the end of a quarter, all quarter grades that are below 50% are rounded up to a 50%. That's not what, um, this policy is saying. The other one is, is that anything that's above a zero gets changed to a 50% if it's not, uh, if it's below 50%. And that would be for all assignments, and that's more of what this is saying. This is saying that for all, uh, assignments and for all, uh, assessments, that, uh, lowest a student possibly could get if they show good faith effort is a 50%. But you could possibly get below a 50% on your quarter if you didn't have, show any effort at all during the quarter, you didn't turn in assignments and things like that, you could still get the zero, and therefore, when you averaged out the quarter grade at the end, it could be below a 50%.
Okay, so I think...
And that would not be rounded.
That would not be rounded up.
So we're only rounding up grades by, by individual assignment or assessment?
Correct.
And if the quarter grade ends up less than 50%, then that's what it is. I think the other point that, uh, Mr. Gibson was bringing up was, um, automatic rounding. So will it be any assignment? Because if it's only supposed to be assignments where the student was, has demonstrated good faith effort, how will that be indicated in the grade book? Because then, to that point, the way the policy is written, it shouldn't be an automatic that any grade under 50% be rounded, because you don't know if that grade, or if that any grade under 50% be rounded, because you don't know if that grade, or if that assignment, if the student demonstrated good faith effort. So how are we going to identify, or how are we gonna have the teachers identify which assignments or assessments should be rounded to 50% and which should not?
So the way it's currently written, it says a zero may be entered when a student has not turned in any work, has been found to have engaged in academic dishonesty, or has failed to demonstrate a genuine attempt. So this is saying that if they did give a genuine attempt, then that they should get a 50%.
They would have, they would keep the zero.
Yeah, they would keep the zero.
So if the zero was entered, then that's a teacher's way of saying there was no good faith attempt, and that would not be rounded.
And then that would not be rounded.
So the teacher enters anything other than a zero?
Correct. It would be rounded up to a 50%.
So it's either you're getting a zero or 50. That's what you're getting?
Essentially. Yeah, because if I understand correctly, because we spoke earlier, the synergy would be going back and automatically, anything, you know, that however you program it.
The way they have it programmed, and they have scripts for it, I guess, is that you can go in and it can read from above a zero to below 50, any of that, they change to 50, and then everything else remains the same.
Okay. So that's kind of the stopgap, then. If the teacher does not change it from a zero, then it, that it will not round.
It won't, right. If it reads a zero, it leaves it as a zero. Otherwise, it'll round it up to a 50 if it's below 50.
Okay. And if I could piggyback quickly, oh, will you finish?
I was just gonna say then, so I think, again, to Mr. Gibson's point, that needs to be properly communicated to the teachers, because it does seem like there's some ambiguity there. And I think that's why there were some questions from, you know, Mr. Gibson and Mr. Lewis tonight about that. And I would suspect that other, you know, educators and staff have questions about that. Because to me, I was thinking, well, if you get a 17%, but there's two scenarios. One, that's all you're getting, because you didn't really, I don't think you, as a teacher, you gave a good faith effort, so you're just getting the 17%. It's not getting rounded. But then there are other scenarios where you got a 17%, but I think that that, you gave, you demonstrated good faith effort, and that's the best you could do, and then that 17% would be rounded to a 50. But in the scenario you're describing, the system is not set up that way. So that's what I'm hearing, is that basically this is-
You can't determine whether-
Systematically, we can't support that. Okay. So it's either a zero or a 50?
Potentially rounded up.
100% correct. We cannot determine.
So I just want to make that clear then, since, especially since our EACC folks are in the room, that needs to be made clear. So I appreciate, and I've said this before, that the 50% good faith effort, rather, definition, I think is, you know, that's, we made a really good attempt at helping educators define that, but then we need to explain that piece, because that even to me wasn't clear after all of these discussions. So I just wanted to make that point. And I hope, Mr. Gibson, Mr. Lewis, that I have properly addressed
I know Dr. Navarro would like to add something, and I just want to address the second part of Mr. Gibson's statement about the whole intent, and making the intent of this policy clear. If you could please speak to that, Mr. Lowndes, and then Dr. Navarro, and then Mr. Hancock.
So the intent was to make sure that any student that is trying and trying their hardest doesn't ever get a grade so low that it impacts their grade to a point where they can't recover.
Yeah.
And so it's all about, you know, having students, the lowest you could possibly go is get a 50%, so that, you know, you can, say you had a bad day, or you didn't, you know, for whatever reason, do very well on a test or a quiz. And the other thing is, is look, in keeping all of the percentages from an A to a B, B to a C, C to a D, and a D to an E, the same. There's a 10% in between all, every single one of those. Whereas, you know, if you allow 17%, your gap between the 17% to a 59% is a lot bigger than from 60 to, you know, 70%.
And this is currently happening, and we talked at the elementary level, right? It's just not with fidelity across the system.
Correct.
Yeah. Thank you.
And so, and the reality is that, you know, we have many people upstairs in teaching and learning that have kids in the system, and it's being applied individually by teachers throughout the county.
Yeah.
But not everyone. So it's not consistent one way or the other right now.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Navarro.
So I just wanted to remind the Board that I'm glad that Chairperson Morley queued up, what's the intent, because that's what you're dealing with, is a policy. There's a superintendent rule that will be written right afterwards. So the, clarifying the intent of this policy is important. The devil's in the detail, and so the devil is called superintendent rule, where we clarify a lot of the pieces that I think the board members are asking for and staff is asking for. So there is a requirement to do that superintendent rule that clarifies specifically to the practitioner how this is being implemented. But I'm glad that the intent is really at the governance level, where you stay in terms of policy, and then that other piece. I'm glad these conversations are happening. Thank you.
Thank you. That was a very key point. Thank you for that. Mr. Hancock, and I believe Ms. Butler, Washington, Indiana, raise. Mr. Hancock.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And so I have a couple of questions, Mr. Lowndes, and thank you for being here to answer them. So as far as the 50% minimum rule per assignment, I've asked this question before, but I would like to ask it again. If this passes, is there and how will the actual grade of the assignment be able to be seen and tracked? Say a student gets a 30%, but it's marked as a 50%. Is there a way where parents and teachers and everyone else can go on the student view or parent view and see what the actual earned grade on the assignment is?
So we're still working with that, because we're, the way it's done now with other districts is that they, they can't, when you enter it, it either enters in as a zero, or a 50, or above a 50. The way, the only way to show it, and we're still working with the synergy, is that they would, they would have to, at the end of the quarter, go in and read anything from above zero to below 50, and change all of those to 50. They can do it, they're saying, but what they can't do it is by individual quarter. So they can do it for every quarter and be consistent from quarter to quarter, but they can't, it would be individuals upstairs doing it, if we changed the quarter by quarter as one of the questions that was asked. And we'd have to do it individually.
Does, would, does Canvas keep, because we're-
Right now, we don't have a grade passback from Canvas to synergy for the grade book, because the way Canvas reads it is they have to have either points, and it doesn't read like we have right now, when we allow percentages of one category and the other. And so the grade passback, when it, when we piloted it last year, was not consistent going and taking the grade and bringing it back into synergy in an accurate manner, because it didn't necessarily have the ability to do the weighting system that synergy does. And so you have to do everything by point system, by a total point system in Canvas, in order for it to correctly move back into the grade book. So that's why we didn't turn on the grade passback this year.
Sorry, Mr. Hancock.
Sorry about that. The other concern I have is with the good faith effort. I know it is defined here, but I still believe that individual educators could determine what a good faith effort is differently from one another. So the, a lot of it's spelled out, but when it gets to the end where it says demonstrate genuine attempt, that's where it can be seen differently through different lenses of different educators, I think. And I think, you know, you can, so you have a multiple choice test where you're, you can pick between four different answers. You can give absolutely zero effort, and if the odds are in your favor, get at least a 25% just by circling a number. I don't, you know, that's asking a lot of our educators to try to be on the same page with what a, what a genuine attempt at an assignment actually is. And it's a gray area, and it's, you know, there's a lot of gray areas with everything that we do, but, you know, it's, I certainly see, and I feel for, and I agree, that, that we should do something to help students, and no student should ever get to a point where they can't recover. How we do that in a true equitable manner, in a fair manner, is hard, and I don't know what the actual answer to that is.
So that discussion happened in both the committee, both committees I was on, the grading committee and also the board committee when looking at it. And because one of the discussions that came out was, you know, if we do the 50% at the quarter, at the end of every quarter, you give a 50%, the lowest you can get. There was many people in the grading system that felt that, that didn't really penalize the higher achieving students, because it didn't allow them, like, to separate themselves in a way from a student who was not doing any work at all. And that was never the intent. And so that's where the zero came in. Like, if a student's not attempting or trying anything, then they're gonna get a zero. And so, but the students that do try, then the lowest that they'll get mathematically is a 50%. And then the question about the zeros, all of a sudden turning to 50% at the quarter, didn't sit well with many people on the grading committee. And that's why we didn't go with, at the end of the quarter, change to 50%. We said you could get below a 50% if you earn zeros during the quarter. I don't know if that answers your question, but that was the thinking behind it, because people were wrestling with the same thing that you're wrestling with.
Sure, yeah.
But they just felt in the end that it was benefiting, the 50% is more of a benefit than it is to not do it.
Sure.
Like you heard tonight from our speaker.
Yeah. No, it, it answers it enough. Thank you. Seriously, thank you.
Ms. Butler, Washington?
Thank you, Mr. Lowndes. This is very difficult to me, because this does not line up with the workforce. I hired one of your students here at Charles County, and they come in with the philosophy of, I don't have to do much, but I'm gonna get past, I'm gonna have to put them on a PIB, performance improvement plan, and for a year, which equates to the school system as you would give them tutoring, to bring their skills up, to be able to do, pass the grade. So I say this very gently. If we set our students up where they cannot feel comfortable that they cannot earn the grade, they're gonna go in the workforce and think the same thing. We don't think alike. You're either gonna do the job, or you're not gonna be there and I'm gonna replace you. This is a hard world. And even when you go into college, those professors are not gonna say what we're saying here. They're gonna say, you're gonna earn the grade, and if you can't earn the grade, you leave the college. So what message are we sending our students when we say, we understand, we'll let you slide? You didn't make it, but this is what we're gonna give you. The world does not care if you do not make the grade. Only care about the production, whatever you are producing that you're gonna give me, because it equates to money and for their business. We have to have our students be savvy, compete on the world stage. If you, I know other districts are doing it. That's fine for those districts. But this is Charles County. That's why people come to Charles County, because we did not give up, and we did not go with the others. We're saying, you make the grade, we're gonna help you. Tutoring, getting on them early. We have plans to do that. So I don't want to go into midstream, while we got all this, you know, the pre-K coming through, we're gonna focus on pre-K, the third grade, we're gonna make sure that they got all, you know, all the education they have, so they'll be on reading and math at level. But then, at the same token, we're saying, oh, by the way, you can not do your best and you make a 50. That's not a message that we should be sending to our future. That is my only thing about this 50 grade. It is not. And then another thing, it says here, a good faith effort, you're gonna have to put numbers behind that. My good faith effort is not the same as yours or any other teacher. In my mind, you didn't make it, zero. That's my good faith, you're leaving it up to me. That's what I'm gonna do. It doesn't say I can't do that. But numbers have to be behind this good faith, because I'm gonna tell you what happened. Your favorite students who are not doing too well is gonna get that 50. And the other ones I don't care about, they're gonna get a zero, because you did not say what numbers I give is how I feel. And that is subjective, and subjective is wrong. And this is an education that base for our students to go into the future.
But I think if you, if you think of it, that a failing, a failing grade is from 50 to 59. A D is from 60 to 69. And so what we're saying is, if you fail assignments or a test, then that is equal to a 50. And just like we're saying, if you get a 95, we're gonna give you an A. Like, we, it's an arbitrary number that we assigned, and we gave it from 90 to 100. We gave it from 80 to 89.5 as a B, and now we're saying we're gonna give a failing grade 50 to 59.4. And so, I mean, if you think of it that way, that we're still saying the student didn't do well. The student still needs help, the student still needs support. And we're equating that to a number, but it's still a failing grade. And I think if, you know, I just, you know, Sam's a high-flying student, does very well. I think if Sam ended up getting a 50, Sam would really work hard the next time to make sure he didn't get that 50 again. Like, I don't think it, it's not, I don't think it's demotivating for students to get, to get a 50, and it's more motivating for a student to get a 14. I would argue that it's more motivated for a student to see, I got a 50, I could possibly pass the course, so I'm gonna continue on, rather than I got a 14, I figure out I got 17, or five more assignments, there's no way I can pass the class, so why should I do any work at all?
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
I don't think, it's what you, it's what you earn, it's what you earn and what you put into it. And that's what we should be focusing on and letting our students know. What you put into is what you get out, because what you're saying is right, but when you go in the real world, it's not right, because we don't equate to this.
Thank you, Ms. Butler. I mean, just to make the point, though, the teachers have always been the determinants of the good faith effort. That's the entire, you know, that's what our whole system is based on. And if it was the case of just getting what you earned, then we wouldn't allow people to do redos. And that's been going on for years as well, and reassessments. You know, I mean, we already have, this is just kind of standardizing the process, as I see it. But Mr. Verk, and then, if you don't mind, because you've already spoken, Mr. Verk, and then Ms. Thomas, and we'll probably maybe do one more if there's anyone else, as we need to move on.
I'd like to mention a lot of the specifics of it. First of all, to Mr. Hancock's point of how can parents be able to see what the actual grade was that someone received. Students, Student View has a notes feature, where I feel like if teachers were to use that, be like, hey, note, you got six, like, 47 out of 100 questions, right? Like, 47%. That could work. And if you introduce that, then you put the manual work into it anyway, right? So teachers do have to have that. There will be, to me, a manual, like, an additional manual impact that teachers have to put in. And for me, that, that works against some of the arguments of, we want to make it completely computerized, right? I think the way that it's working, where in elementary schools, where teachers are able to put in 50s without necessarily putting in a different grade than, than what synergy gives it, is not necessarily something that has to be done, right? A teacher can still put in 50% and then have whatever the actual grade is as a note, right? And, and with that point, if this is to go through, I think it's good that we're changing it assignment by assignment, instead of at the end of the quarter, because I don't want a student to, you know, suddenly have to, like, be surprised by, you know, hoping that my grade is gonna shift from like a 27 to a 64 or something like that. So I think it should be something that is taking effect as it's happening. So I feel like the notes feature is gonna be how you're gonna communicate that to parents, instead of having a different grade at the end of the quarter suddenly. And with that said, I want to say, when it comes to full, full, genuine, full faith effort, there's a difference between 100% the day of, and 100% the weeks that led to the studying behind, let's say, an exam. Because if I were to take an exam on French today, I would not score very well, right? I can't speak French. I'd get, if it was multiple choice, I'd probably get like a 25, and that would be rounded up to a 50, right? And there, I would not really be able to say that was not a genuine effort. It was, right? Because I tried my very best to score highly on this exam. But I think when you put in the implication of this onto students, there is a difference between, hey, I'm gonna put in all of my effort on this day, to if I knew I was getting this French exam, like, two weeks ahead of time, which is gonna happen in school. Your students are gonna know most of the time, I'm getting quizzed on this, this, and this date. It, I'm afraid that it takes away the desire to want to study as much, because I think that's a way, that's a part that the opinion isn't able to consider. No one can put an opinion on how much, how much effort you put into this test, without really considering, how much did you put into it when it came to paying attention in class, when it came to doing your homework, when it came to reading the chapter notes, right? And that's a part of the policy that I find very complicated. And when it comes to it, I think a big part of the confusion is that it's being treated as like, you're gonna get like a 50% that's set with, you know, if you have a few assignments that are less than that. But what it's really gonna look like for most students is you have like a 27, like a 70, like an 80, 64, 63, and then, instead of having that 27, or having that, having- And then, instead of having that 27 or having that, having like a few 10s and 20s, you're gonna have those 50s. And for me, when it comes to, for example, high school, when you have a quarter that has like 20, 30, 20, 25 process assignments, when you have a certain class and you get a zero on a certain assignment near the end of the quarter, your grade shifts by like 1 or 2 percent sometimes, maybe 3 or 4 percent. And I talked about this last board meeting. When a student is like at a letter grade, plus 4 percent, plus 3 or 4, you know, at least that much percent, it takes away an incentive to want to try. And I talked, I asked a question about late work earlier. It takes away a lot of the impact from the penalties for late work, right? If I am to get a 50, if I'm to turn in an assignment, I get 75 percent on a day late, I would get less than a 50 percent for that. And that is a penalty for turning it in late. But if I am to do that with the new policy, then if I turn in an assignment that's 25 percent the day of, or the day after, or two days after, I get a 50 percent anyways, right? And that, I feel like complicates it as well by mitigating the impact of late work on a student. And going back to the manual aspect of teachers having to put in the notes, I'd like the board to consider, I know, it can't be done in Student View, but the first semester 50 percent rule and removing it for the second semester. Because to me, I understand that a lot of students will need that help when something goes wrong in their life, when something, when they're struggling to learn a content of a class that early on. But I feel like in the third and fourth quarters, if you're still struggling and getting below 50 percent on assignments constantly, is it not a telltale sign that you should no longer be in the class, right? And I want to ask, how do I motion to amend? When do I do that?
To move to amend?
We haven't, sorry.
Oh.
We haven't had a motion yet, so.
Yeah, okay, so that's after, that's after. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you so much. Yeah. I'm sorry.
Thanks so much. You know, I was in, I was in the committee that, you know, we talked a lot about this policy. And we talked to the educators, we talked to, I think one thing that we probably need to try to separate from this decision to move forward with the 50 percent rule is that there are a lot of technicalities that have to be really detailed out in superintendent's rules, right? We had a lot of conversations about superintendent's rules. And there's also a technology aspect, right? You will have to go back to Student View and ask whether or not we can write, you know, a script that can do some of the things that we're asking for unilaterally across the board. So, those things can be worked out. So, I would, I would encourage my board members not to get wrapped around the axle of the technicalities of how a system will work, because that's not really what we need to do now. We need to make a decision whether or not this policy is good for students, right? That's really at the crux of what we're doing. So, I wanna say three really important points. One, I don't believe that we've hired teachers in this county with the intent that we don't trust them. If we're gonna put a policy in place that says that a teacher will be able to determine what is good intent, I want to assume good intent by my teachers. I want to assume that they're gonna know their students. They're with these students every day, or for whatever classes they have. They may be intimately knowledgeable about these students. So, when they're making a decision judiciously about good intent, that they're going to really think about the student. And to Ms. Butler Washington's point, subjectivity is a consideration, right? But then, we send a note, or we send a message to our teachers, we don't expect to see subjectivity. And then, we trust that they will implement this policy without subjectivity, right? Because if we don't trust our teachers, then, you know, we aren't, we aren't hiring the right people, right? So, I wanna say that I'm gonna trust that the teachers are going to do the right thing. The second part is really superintendent's rules, the devil's in the details. I think we can work those things out, and we can really implement a policy that's gonna work for students. But the third most important point is students matter. And all students are not created equal. Our homes that these students come from are not created equal. The experiences they have in schools are not created equal. Their academic levels or their ability to progress is different, right? And so, it is an incredibly complex task that we're trying to achieve by, by putting in a policy that will not be 100 percent perfect. I'm gonna say that again. Will not be 100 percent perfect. But it is our best effort to make sure that we aren't hurting any student and that we are trusting our educational professionals to support those students, to make sure that they, they are successful and they believe that they can be successful. Because that's the important point. We're talking about, will a student give up? 50 points from 50 to 100, that's a lot, right? Everything else is 10, 10, and 10. And then, we get to the end and we say, "You got 50 points to make it up." I don't believe that that is really, and again, to Mr. Louts' point, which I thought was superb, it's arbitrary. If we have the ability to take something that is arbitrary and make it concrete for the success of the students, I urge our board members to all get on board with making sure that we aren't hurting students. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lucas.
All right, thank you, Chair Morley. So, Mr. Louts, I just want to make sure, because I think what I heard you say was a little different than what was said last time we had this discussion about where, where the rounding occurs. So, let's just say, to keep it simple, there's a class and there's, the only thing that counts for your final grade is four tests that you take, okay? Or four, we'll just say four assignments, we won't even say a test. So, if I do the first one and I, my, my real score is a 20, but in the teacher's eyes, I've demonstrated everything it says here, then I'm gonna get a 50 on that, correct?
Correct.
On that assignment?
Correct.
Okay. And just to put a bow on everything, where, where will the 20 and the 50 be visible for the student and the parent to see?
Well, that's where we, we are still working with the technicality part of it with Synergy. Because currently, right now, the way they have it set up is that the lowest grade you could possibly, in, in other districts where they've worked this out, they have it so that the lowest grade you can enter is a zero or a 50.
Sure. Okay, okay. So, let me, let me skip on to the next thing then. So, the same class, same four assignments, but the, and on the first three, demonstrated a good effort, got a 20, that got rounded to a 50 for the first three assignments, but the last assignment just punted, didn't even try. So, I'm gonna get a zero on that.
Correct.
So, that means, does that mean then, for, in the first example, when everything was rounded to a 50, that my numerical score for that quarter will be a 50? Is that, that's true?
Not for the way this is written. So, you could still get, because you would, you would divide, you'd get 75 divided by 4 would be your, end up being your...
No, no, for the first example, for, I'm sorry. So, you answered the second part. For the first example, when I got a 50 on the four assignments, I, my, my numerical score would be a 50.
Would be a 50, correct.
But for the third one, it'd be a 150 by 4, which would be a 38 percent, 37.45. So, it gets rounded up, I assume the 38 percent. That would be my numerical score.
For the quarter.
For the quarter.
Yes.
Okay. All right, I just wanna, just wanna make that clear. Okay. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you.
And I, I just, I'm sorry, one more. I agree with my board members, you know, you wanna, you want to make sure you have an opportunity to give a kid a chance, because you never know, as everyone said, what's going on. And, you know, we can have healthy discussion about where that, that line is drawn. But that's all I wanted to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Did you get a chance to speak, Ms. Kramer?
Yeah.
You did, okay, all right. Yeah, just, okay, okay. Just one final point, because we're way over time.
Okay. I just wanna clarify that I did not say teachers, I did not trust teachers. I was just making a assumption of what it could be. So, I never said I didn't trust teachers. So, I just wanna want that to be out there. So, just want to clarify that.
And I just wanna reiterate, as I said at the last meeting, that myself and the law firm of Thomas &amp; Thomas, in conjunction with our other committee members, worked on this grading policy, understanding it's not perfect. Very similar to the eligibility policy that Mr. Lucas spent a lot of time working on. Understanding it wasn't perfect. I didn't vote for it because I had concerns, but I support it. It's our policy, so now we own it. So, this is, that's very similar to how I feel about grading. It's not perfect. There's never gonna be a perfect policy when you're talking about 28,000 children. It's just not practical. But what's more important for me than perfection is equity. And to know that we already have some version of this, that teachers are already taking upon themselves. And the underlying reason, I'm sure, is because they see that this student is trying. That I don't wanna make it impossible for the student to ever pass this class. And that, of course, is gonna be the student that gives up. We're not talking about going from a 50 percent to an 80 percent. 50 is still failing. So, I think people, you know, may be losing track of that. For the millions watching and for any of my board members, 50 is still not passing. So, please understand, we're not proposing that you take a failing student and give that student even a C. If you unfortunately fail, and if you get to Mr. Lucas's examples, 50s, you're still gonna fail that class. No one wants to see that happen, but that is still getting the grade that you've earned. So, I, you know, don't wanna belabor the point. The chair will entertain a motion regarding the grading policy. Ms. Thomas?
Motion to approve.
To approve, okay. Seconded, Ms. Kramer. We've already had plenty of discussion. Thank you. All right. Did you want to amend, Mr.? Okay, go ahead.
I wanted to move to amend the grading policy to restrict the 50 percent rule to only the first semester of the school year.
Okay. All right, so we will vote on that first, that we would apply this policy to only the first semester of the school year. So, all in favor of that? Please, oh, oh, sorry. Second, I apologize. You're seconded, Ms. Kramer. You say, okay.
We'd have to do it manually.
You'd have to do it manually.
So, may I make a comment?
Yes.
So, I just wanna make sure of two quick things. This is a substantial potential change to the policy that I think would need to come back if there's, if there's a change to it, right now being opposed. The other thing that concerns me is, and I'm just asking, can we operationalize with the current systems that we have without causing a lot of teacher...
No, the only way we can do it, because we can't even, the company couldn't do it this way, because you have to either do all...
Talking about teachers entering manually grades. Okay, I just wanna highlight that for the board, because that will be a concern if it does move forward to operationalize that.
Thank you, Dr. Navarro. And that was, you know, gonna be the discussion portion, just on the amendment, to clarify. So, I appreciate that. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. We've already had, one more second. It's been moved and seconded, and this motion is only on restricting this to apply to the first semester. That is your motion, right? Okay, so you have discussion, Ms. Lucas?
I did, thank you. So, I, I think, you know, when you look at what a student is able to do as the year progresses, if, if they achieve a 50, whether that's a legitimate 50 or however much it's been rounded up, and if that happens, if that's their grade for the first three quarters, the, the chance of them passing the class is honestly very, very slim. They'd have to get a 90 in the final quarter. And I think, and that's why I ask about how, how the grades can be visualized or communicated. Because when you talk about showing good faith, if, if, if you're not on, on this positive slope, you know, after the first half of the year, one, you have to see that. If all you're seeing is a 50, if all your parents are seeing is a 50, then you really don't have any gauge on that. So, I, I, I support Mr. Verk's amendment, because I think it offers kids a chance to, to have that recovery opportunity. And quite frankly, if they're not getting the class by, by the first semester, they're, they're probably not gonna, you know, have this epiphany coming back after, you know, winter break. And so, I, I, I think it, I think it helps the kids, and it still maintains some integrity for, for everyone involved. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ms. Lucas, Ms. Thomas, Ms. Kramer?
Thank you. I'll, I'll try to be really brief. I, I absolutely appreciate our student board members' position on looking to see whether or not we have the ability to have some, some IT support in order to make this a little easier. But I, I don't think I can support it, because I know way too much about technology, that the cost for our school district to have a specific customization to do this, I do not think is worth the dollars, when our intent can be achieved with a much more, less expensive ability to do it. If we had, you know, coders and developers and we owned our own system, it may be a probability that we could do that, but the customization alone could be up to a million dollars. And that's just, we have to think about that, when we think about that, what it means for us to be able to do something like that. So, that, that would be my, my reason for not being able to support that, though I do understand the intent.
Thank you, Ms. Kramer, and then Ms. Smith.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Verk, for your, for your thoughtful comments. And I always do appreciate, and I think all of my colleagues do, when you chime in and give, give your input as the student board member. So, definitely, you know, do appreciate that. I also agree with Ms. Thomas, though, that I couldn't support the amendment for a couple of reasons. One, because of the manual implications on our teachers. I wouldn't be in favor of doing anything like that or having to pay substantially for some type of, you know, electronic customization. Definitely wouldn't be in support of that either, for, for, just for that purpose. And, you know, also just wanna make sure that I make the point that it's been brought up, you know, if the student isn't doing well in the beginning, then they likely shouldn't be in the class. But if it's a required class for graduation, you really don't have that option. So, you're gonna have to stick it out and, you know, let the chips fall where they may. So, the opportunity to just disenroll in a class because you didn't do well in the first, you know, quarter is not always an option, right? So, just wanna clear that up. Obviously, if it's an elective, you know, that's, that's something that could be considered to place the student in another class that maybe they would do, you know, fare better in. But in requirements, you know, such as they are, you wouldn't be able to do that. And so, again, I just wouldn't be in favor of anything manual. And I'm more in, I would more prefer a more across-the-board standard way for teachers to apply this policy in each quarter, as opposed to saying, "Well, in first quarter or first semester, you do this, and then second quarter or second semester, you do this." I'm just not in favor of creating that type of confusion. But definitely appreciate your comments, Mr. Verk, and thank you for engaging.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, in the interest of time, I'll be brief. Mr. Verk, it's already been said, but I'll just say it again. Absolutely support hearing your voice. Appreciate, not support, I'm sorry. Appreciate hearing your voice and kind of your stance and your rationale for why you made the amendment in which you did. I, however, will not be able to support it for the points already laid out. But again, do appreciate you stepping forward to share your voice. And hopefully, it's reflective of the conversations you've had with your peers across several schools. But again, appreciate your, your voice, but unable to support it at this time.
Thank you.
I think we misunderstood the amendment. He didn't ask for the manual to be, the manual to be in his amendment. His amendment was, he moved to, to a strict, the first quarter only. That's what his amendment.
Semester.
Semester. That's, that's what, he didn't ask for it to be technology, any of that, so.
It would have to be, though, to be implemented.
Mr. Louts said it would be a manual process.
And that was Dr. Navarro's point.
The way I understood it was that we couldn't change anything technologically where it went, came to your, your point of spending money in order to change it. Because I understand that Student View is a very vast system that different school systems use, aside from just us. And for me, I understand, I understand if, if that's a burden you don't wanna put on teachers, but I was thinking of it in the technological aspect. To me, the software would be, aside from what, what mine was, my goal in mind was.
Okay. I'm not following the Mr. Verk. When you say the software, so how are you proposing that it would, it would be implemented?
So, so if a teacher sees a grade is below 50, then they put it in the gradebook as a 50 by themselves, instead of putting something into the gradebook as a different number that the software itself puts in as a 50. That I was, I was saying can be put in as, that can be labeled somewhere that isn't the grades. Because in Student View, right next to the grades, there is a little portion that, for notes, that students can see. For example, teachers often put in something like NHI or, or where's your work on number nine or something. Where Mr. Louts was talking about, where it's a simple command, where if, if number is between, you know, .1 and 49.99, then it's a 50. But in the amendment, that would not be part of the software.
Okay. Did you wanna respond, Mr. Louts? Oh, go ahead.
I was gonna say that it's gonna work the same way if you was gonna approve it. It's gonna work the same way. So, we're getting our course here, and I do support it. It's gonna work the same way. He didn't ask for any technology. He didn't ask for any of that stuff. So, if you approve it the way you wanna approve it, we're gonna ask, it's, it's simply doing the same thing.
All right. Let me, let Mr. Louts speak on the implementation.
No, you can change two different ways right now. It can change it, at the end of the quarter, it can go back and change every grade that's below a 50 to a 50 percent. But that's not what we're doing. Or it can change, it can look at all the grades in the gradebook Or it can change, it can look at all the grades in the gradebook and change any grade that's not a zero, but below 50 to a 50% in figuring it out. So it, it figures it out for a 50. So it doesn't rely on necessarily teachers putting in a 50% or whatever. It can, it, it, that's what it changes those grades to. Go ahead.
Okay, Mr., okay, we, we gotta wrap this up.
Well, I mean, this is, this is very important. The way I understand it, okay, what Mr. Verk proposed is it would be implemented as, as if he didn't propose any change of the policy, okay? If, if we approve this as is, however it's implemented, he's saying, great, implement that for the first two quarters.
No, he said the first quarter.
The semester.
First semester, first semester, first two quarters, right. For the first semester, okay? And then after that, you do it like we're doing it now, currently, correct?
But, but we couldn't set up our gradebook in, in order to be able to, like, the first two quarters.
Three people are talking.
We couldn't set up the gradebook the first two quarters, different from the sec, last two quarters.
That's what I meant by technology.
When you say the grade book.
The, the grade, the teachers enter their grades into the gradebook and then we, we figure it all out with technology, the GPA and everything at the end of the, the quarters.
I hear what you're saying, I think, I think, I think, I think it's a lot more, you're making it a lot more difficult than it needs to be.
The way, the way I understand it.
Hold on, hold on. Can people please wait to be recognized, hold on.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay, because what I'm understanding, the experts saying, Mr. Lowndes, is that this is not something that's simply implemented for one quarter semester, whatever. There, there will require some change to the code or whatever we're currently using, which will come at a cost. Is that your, your statement, sir?
Yes.
Okay, and Dr. Navarro, did you wanna add anything? 'Cause I know you had, I just wanna make sure everyone is understanding what we're voting on.
So, yes, unfortunately, as antiquated as it sounds, we would need to do a customization to synergy so that we could change it, even if it sounds logical that you could just do it for, for one quarter, one semester, whatever piece of it is, it doesn't quite work out that way. So we would have to do a customization. And I'm not sure how much that is gonna cost or the timing for it. And then the other piece around where teachers write notes or, or could take in the notes, that is not a common requirement. So teachers have different variabilities in which they do that. And we would have to have discussions about that. So I, I, I do have reservations and, and the board can choose to vote, as the board chooses to vote. My recommendation to my board is that there's operational problems that I cannot guarantee that will meet the, the law, the letter of your policy intent with this particular request. And so that's why I have reservations for it. It's nothing against anything, I mean, it's, it's great.
It's just a fact.
It's just, I just wanna give that advice.
Madam Chair, I would like to call for the question. Please, we're, we're ending the discussion.
Well, I need her to clarify which one she was talking about. She said she's.
She's already, Mr. Lowndes and Dr. Navarro both said the motion that Mr. Verk is, is proposing is gonna require an additional cost or customization, and she doesn't know at this time what that will be.
Okay, what would, what would be, be, be for the other cost then?
She just said she doesn't know.
So it's a cost either way?
So, so the, the motion that is, that has been amended and presented, I'd have to go back and take a look at it. The other thing is that I also would advise the board, if there's interest in that motion, um, I also think it's substantial, and, correct me if I'm wrong, it's substantial change
to the policy.
To the policy, and I would advise the board to give it a, one more time, even though I'm the first one to be like, oh, let's close this tonight.
Yeah.
Um, give it, if it does pass, it needs to be given a little bit more time so that we can properly give public time for, for, to consume this and also be able to bring back potentially some cost analysis to help you make a more informed decision. But right now, as it stands as an ask, uh, I'm almost pretty sure we're gonna need to do some customization, because I had this conversation with Steve.
Steve.
And I already know everything we pay for.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Kramer's called for the question, we're ending the debate. The question on the floor, again, the motion on the floor, is an amendment to the acceptance of the proposed policy. So we're voting now just on Mr. Verk's motion, which is to amend the policy to apply the grading change only to the first semester, okay? It's been moved, seconded, discussion. All in favor, please raise your hands. One, two, three, four, five, okay, and opposed. All right, the motion fails, a six required, thank you. All right, is there a motion now to accept the original grading policy as written? Yes, oh, that was, and, yeah, that was the original one, thank you. It's getting late, all right. We've already had discussion, please. All in favor, please raise your hands. One, two, three, four, five, okay, and opposed. One, two, three, okay, are there any abstentions? Did, did everyone vote, or are you all abstaining?
I voted for the first one, but I went up late.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, let's, let's go again. All in favor of the, the grading policy, please raise your hands. One, two, three. That's six?
Yes.
All right, and opposed. Three, okay. And, yeah, are there any abstentions? Are you abstaining, Ms.? Okay, well, the motion passes, as we had six. Yeah, the, the original motion, yes.
Ms. Morley, we actually have another policy that is along with that one. That was the sister policy, and that's called the weighted GPA. I think this might be a shorter.
You would think, right?
Are you sure?
I know. Okay, I'll, I'll, I know, I'll read it. "The Board of Education of Charles County encourages students to pursue academic rigor through honors and advanced placement courses when appropriate. The superintendent shall, shall develop related rules for the weighting of grades for honors courses and college-level courses, including advanced placement courses, for the computation of grade point averages, GPA."
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Hickok. Seconded, it's on Ms. Smith. By a fraction of a second. Any brief discussion?
A man.
All right.
It's on the board, too.
What, sorry?
It's up here, too.
Oh, okay, thank you. All right, all in favor? All right, now it is unanimous. Thank you, okay. I'm gonna get a page, Dr. Navarro. It was a good discussion. All right, and finally, Mr. Heim, if we could please ask you to come up, just in case there are any questions. Um, the final action item is on the comprehensive maintenance plan that was presented at the September board meeting. Does anyone have any questions of Mr. Heim?
Thank you, sir.
So it was a short visit, right? All right. Appreciate you, sir. All right, is there a motion to accept the comprehensive maintenance?
Motion to accept.
Thank you, Mr. Hickok, seconded by Ms. Brenda Thomas. Any discussion? All right, all in favor? All right, and the motion passes. And finally, Ms. Brenda Thomas. All right, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Miller-Smith, all in favor. All right, we are adjourned. Please take us off the air.